I'll come back. Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon.
Bailey Scott.
I'm here.
councillor Lynne.
I'm here.
councillor Short.
Here.
Bailey Sawyers.
I'm here.
councillor Ross.
Yeah.
And I'll try again, councillor Richardson.
Here.
Yep. That's everybody here.
Okay, thank you. We asked Mr Menni to go through the protocol of a digital meeting.
Thank you convenor. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is free recorded. Should any member leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain into the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn your camera off and see if that includes matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and then rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat. The convenor will then invite you to speak. Where items are for noting or whether there has been no disagreement expressed, the convenor will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please do not use the meeting chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the council's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? If so, please indicate in the meeting chat.
Okay.
There are no queries convenor, so please begin the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Before I call, I'll ask Tracy to call the first item. I would just like to highlight to members of the committee that on the items of education, I've asked for the head of education to address the items and so attempt to address any question that's asked to offer. I thought it more important that our head teachers were left in their schools and no attending such a meeting as this. But if we needed them to come back at any time because there's a burning issue that we would like to hear from them directly, then I'm sure that we could manage to do that. Covid's been a particularly difficult time for education and obviously a lot of planning went in before the summer holidays. And it's now settling down time and I felt best not to interrupt schools any further than we need it to do so. So I hope that you're in agreement with that and hopefully Mrs May can answer questions best she can. Okay Tracy, if you want to call the first item.
Okay, the first item is are there any declarations of interest?
No, okay, thank you.
Fraser has his hand up.
Sorry Fraser.
Yeah, just simply to say that in relation to item five, inspection of Sidlow View Primary School, I have a relative who attends Sidlow View Primary School.
Okay, that's noted. Tony, am I seeing your hand up there as well? No.
Okay, that takes us on to item two is the 2020-2021 internal audit plan and item three Dundee City Council Audit Scotland Annual Audit Plan. These were dealt with as a central council business under for noting. Item four is the Education Scotland HMI inspection of Barnhill Primary School and Nella Year Centre.
Okay, would you like to say anything on that report, Mrs May?
Yes, thank you convenor. If you don't mind, if you're okay, we have four inspection reports of our schools and I was thinking I would cover the headlines together and then open up for questions if that's okay with you.
I'm happy to go with that, yeah.
Thank you. So four recent inspection reports over the last session, all with either very good or good evaluations, which is a real positive step in the right direction. I would hope you would see. The inspection of Barnhill was a full inspection, which means that colleagues from HMI Education Scotland are in the school for a whole week. Whereas St Joseph's and Fintry Primary Schools, they were the two short models. So colleagues from HMI just in for two days. But still, all inspection reports receiving very good and good evaluations. The Sidlow View Primary School was a return engagement with HMI as a result of a really poor inspection just about two years ago. And indeed, this was a return visit, a return engagement and also very, very positive. So I would like to just highlight a couple of things and then open up for questions or comments. In all of these reports, there have been more strengths than there are areas for improvement. So that's a real positive move as well. The kind of highlights of strengths were around leadership and curriculum, learning, teaching, attainment achievement, strong nurturing relationships and ethos in our schools. And what's always a delight to see in a report is the children themselves being highlighted as a strength. So we feel that these are really positive reports. Sidlow View, it was also commented that there was good progress on the original inspection areas for improvement and also a confirmation about the strength of the leadership of the head teacher that we had put in place in order to address the issues that had been in that school prior to that inspection. I would also draw our committee's attention to section 4.3, where I have highlighted that the work that we've done with our schools in terms of changing our approach to a much more proportionate and targeted school improvement framework alongside the work that we've been doing in the various work streams of the attainment challenge. Three out of four of these schools were targeted for that effort across the last couple of years. And it's great to see that we're doing the right things, if you like, in terms of all of that being reflected in these inspection reports. So I would probably best to stop there and give the opportunity for people to ask me questions or make comments.
Okay, I think Bailey McPherson's looking to come in.
Thanks very much convenor. I would first of all say, you know, what good reports these all are. You know, very good progress at all the schools concerned and particularly pleasing to see the progress at Sidlow View. I remember a meeting we couldn't possibly have in the current health emergency being very crammed in committee room one when we discussed the disappointing report, the previous report some time ago, as you say Audrey, nearly two years ago. And it's good to see the positive progress there. Obviously exemplary reports also in relation to Barnhill, Fintry and St Joseph's. I'm particularly pleased purely from a it's my patch point of view to see St Joseph's. Michelle and her team at St Joseph's do an absolutely superb job. It's a lovely, warm, community spirited school and I'm delighted that they had such a positive outcome. I only have one question, it's actually in relation to Fintry, which again is a very positive report. In 4.5 in the overview, the council's report as opposed to HMIs, indicates one of the areas for improvement agreed with the school and the council was in relation to improving writing and numeracy across the school. Now it struck me, looking at the report, that actually they're pretty strong in that respect already. And I was just really wondering if Mrs May could indicate to us, does HMI give an indication as to what areas, you know, when you've got a good performing school, they're already doing well in relation to numeracy and writing, do HMI give an indication as to where they think that attainment improvement can be achieved? Because I'm just very conscious of the fact this is not a school where we would have concerns, I think, about the progress in relation to writing and numeracy.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. It's a good question because as it appears in the report, it's quite a bland statement. But as you'll understand, part of the process is to get, you know, in a room. In the olden days, we would be in a room with the colleagues from HMI talking through the detail of a much bigger record of findings from an inspection and we end up with a very high level summary. But yeah, they will have indicated that at some levels, you know, and if I can remember correctly, around primary four, there was a bit of a dip. But in general, you know, across the board, the attainment was improving. So they will definitely have in the bigger detail have indicated to the head teacher in this particular stage or group or with a teacher's class, we need to look at that. So that detail is certainly fed back to the school.
Yeah, grateful for that, thank you.
councillor Richardson. Fabia, you there?
Thanks convenor, sorry, just having problems on mute in there. It's a question for Audrey regarding Sidlow View. I mean, it's good to see that there has been quite a lot of progress made. But however, there are still a number of areas that still require improvement. And I'm glad to see that there will be continued support and monitoring as it goes forward. However, perhaps the situation has changed. But you know, it does say that it's an acting head teacher and an acting deputy head teacher that are providing strong strategic leadership. And I'm just wondering, what are the plans in terms of these two roles? Will they continue to be acting until the inspection process finishes? Or have we any plans to get somebody in there as a permanent post?
Okay, thank you, thank you for that as well. A really important question. We put Judith in who was the acting deputy as an additional deputy to build capacity with the management team in the school. She has actually gone back to her own school, her permanent post is in St Francis and she has returned to that school. However, the head teacher there is soon to be made permanent in that post. So the head teacher who we brought in to lead the school has rescinded her post in her other school and that will become in the public domain quite soon as we advertise the post for her school where she had her permanent position. So Kim Flynn will continue to be the permanent head teacher in Sidlow View Primary School. So we've already moved forward on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that you Margaret? Bailey Scott.
Hello. Yeah, these are really good reports and I'm particularly pleased about Sidlow View given the meeting we had a couple of years ago when it was quite difficult meeting. So I'm glad to see the positive progress made there. And I was pleased to read as well, and I think all three of them, it says that the children at these schools are very articulate, polite and well behaved children. So that was really pleasing too. I have a question about Barnhill and as you can imagine, being a very fair councillor, I'm really pleased to see that glowing report that Barnhill's received. But in the section from the council, it says that the senior leadership team should develop a whole school state intervention policy to ensure identification of needs for children with barriers to learning. But elsewhere in the report, it says that there are robust arrangements in place to monitor children's attainment achievements and also that the teacher has made very good use of pupil equity funding. So I just wondered what additional is going to be done in response to that requirement.
Okay, thank you for that Bailey Scott. Again, you know, we always, we've got a very, very balanced and very positive report there. And indeed, that highlighting pupil equity funders as a priority and getting that priority right, it's really, it's really positive to receive that feedback. And so, yeah, we would look at how the school are dealing with children who have barriers to their learning. So the kind of work that we would do there would be led by our educational psychology service, who will work with the staff, albeit remotely and online just now, to look at the stages of intervention that they're using when they have children who have got barriers to their learning. So it would be, it would be an opportunity for professional learning for the staff to work with their educational psychologists and to look at just how they're managing that. As you can imagine, there's, you know, looking at the attainment in that school, which has been an improving picture. There's lots of children doing really well. And so sometimes you have to take a step back and look at, but how are we dealing with the children? They're not dealing so well because they've got, they've got barriers to their learning and it's just that area there that they want to focus in on and improve. So our Ed Sykes would be the right people who would support the school and that will be through sessions online, you know, in collegiate time at the end of a school day, some training. And they might even use some of them service day. We're also speaking to our head teachers just now in this kind of new world we're all operating in about how we can use development days and focus on what they should be doing in their school without us getting together. Normally we would be together for a whole day of workshops and so on. So how can we manage these in this kind of context through teams and so on? And one of the areas is always to look at, are we really doing the best for our children with additional support needs? So we could, we could address this across the board, but we can also address it at school level with the support from the psychology service. That will be.
Any other question Bailey Scott? Can I maybe ask the question? It's in relation to Sidlow View because I always thought that our quality assurance of the department let the school down. Because, you know, we went in the improvement officers and weren't able to follow that through to the improvement being made to the teaching and learning of our children in that school. So that being said, how have we developed a stronger regime? And how do we check that against every other school in the city to make sure this couldn't happen again?
Okay, thank you convenor for the question. It's something that I just alluded to very briefly when I said that we have completely changed our school improvement framework. It's something we've been working on for a couple of years now. So what we try to do is gather as much data as we possibly can about a school. So not just attainment data, but attendance data, the number of complaints a school gets, the number of, look at staff absence as well as pupil absence, inclusion, exclusion. So we're building a much, much bigger picture in terms of data around a school, which really gives us a profile of when a school is looking healthy or it's not. And so we maybe didn't do as much of that in the past and we're certainly doing a lot more of that now. My team work in a different way. So when we pull that together in my education management team with the education managers and the education officers, we're looking at all of that data together on a regular basis and we're asking questions around what's the profile. And of course, there are fewer visits just now because we're trying to keep the footfall down in our schools due to spread and so on. But we're still keeping in touch, we still had our term one visits online and looking at the data that our schools are returning and their self evaluation and so on. And what we're doing is we're looking across the city and we're looking to areas where we think this isn't looking as good as it could be. And so we're targeting further support, further visits, further, you know, a deeper dive, if you like. So we shifted that to a much more proportionate and targeted approach to visiting schools, spending more time in schools if we need to spend more time, spending less time in schools where we know things are looking like they're going really well. So we're using the data as evidence and intelligence, but we're also using the knowledge of schools across the board and pulling that together and not wasting time and officer time in schools where things are going really, really well. They are still entitled to get support from the central staff. So they'll still get a visit and they'll still get that touching base and we'll still ask them for returns. But if we think we've got to worry about a school, we'll be spending a lot longer there to make sure we're helping people to move forward in the right direction.
Okay, thanks for that. Can I maybe just ask if everybody's in agreement then, seeing there's no other questions on that, that we agree item five to seven, or it's actually item four to seven on block?
Agreed.
It appeared to be agreed, thank you very much. Can I maybe just ask Mrs May to mention to each of these schools our appreciation for the hard work and the efforts that they've put in in getting these very good inspections. I'm sure it's difficult and has its challenges and education has its challenges at the moment with where we've been in Covid. And I think I'd just like to put us on our appreciation for the efforts that our staff are making on behalf of us and educating the children on our side. So if you could do that for us, it'd be much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much and I'm sure they'll be delighted to receive that feedback. And I'll make sure that I do share that with all the head teachers and ask them to share it with their staff in turn. And it is very much appreciated, thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Okay Tracy.
Okay, that takes us to item eight, external inspection report for Gilbert Road Children's Rest White House.
Do we have someone that's going to talk on that item?
Yeah, thank you Bailey Keane and it's Glenn Lloyd, acting head of service. Obviously then we've got the three reports on the children's houses. One on Gilbert Road, one on Drummond House and one on Fairburn Street. All three inspections were carried out towards the end of last year or the beginning of this year. I'll provide a brief summary of each, you'll no doubt have questions. And if there are any particularly detailed questions, I have Alison Lucas with me as well. Alison's the service manager for the houses and also Mark McCaulay. Mark directly line manages each of the managers in each of the houses as well. So hopefully we'll be able to cover any, any questions you might want to ask.
Happy to try and do three items in one as well if that suits. And people can come in and ask the questions as they see fit.
Okay.
You got a question for me Fraser or are you just on one of the items will it be?
I have a question on two of the items convenor.
We'll just hear from Glenn first.
Yeah, sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay Glenn.
Okay, thank you Bailey Keane. The first one then, Gilbert Road is inspected in November 2019, so way before the pandemic started, obviously now a number of months ago. At the time, the house was looking after two young people on a long-term basis as opposed to providing respite care for children with disabilities. As you can see from the report, there are many positives. One of the children rated the unit eight out of 10. A parent said that it provided very good care. There was an environment of warmth, care, good humour, a low-key approach to distress behaviour, including de-escalating difficult situations. On that basis, it received a grade of good for supporting young people's wellbeing, but an adequate for care and support planning. The care and support planning issue basically related to the fact that it temporarily changed its remit from a respite facility to a long-term facility. The staff had been used to putting plans in place covering one or two nights. They weren't used to putting plans in place covering a number of months. We've since addressed that by providing additional training to the staff and some peer mentoring from staff more experienced than that from the other houses. And Mark, who as I say is here today as well, is also overseeing those plans through regular visits. So that's a brief summary of the situation at Gilbert Road. One good, one adequate. We've addressed the adequate and the house at the moment at least is very settled. I don't know if there are any questions at all.
Okay, Bailey McPherson.
Yeah, I apologise for the fact my answering machine is going in the background. Not much I can do about that unfortunately. My question really was around, and I agree, there's many positives about Gilbert Road in the report. My question was really around the area of personal plans and I know there's been progress on that. I'm just really wondering Glenn, how does the department monitor this to ensure that the improvements that have been put in place are maintained? And that when it's next inspect, there isn't an issue around the quality of personal plans?
Okay, that's a good question Bailey McPherson and two things. Broadly speaking, we're now carrying out quarterly case file audits right across the service with a particular focus on chronology's assessment and plans. Within that, more recently during the Covid experience, we've been carrying out weekly audits of 80 cases right across the service. Specifically though, in relation to the houses, over and above that, Mark is also now carrying routine visits to check the individual plans of the five young people that are in four of the houses and the specific plans of the young people that are in Gilbert Road at any given time. So we've tightened up on the regularity and the frequency of the auditing process and we've tightened up as well on the reporting back of all of that information to the central management team. So we can oversee all that and provide targeted support wherever it might be needed more.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
councillor Richardson. You're on mute Margaret.
Yeah, sorry. My question was re-item nine and I'd probably rather hear the Glenn summary first of the report.
Okay. So you've given an overview of the report to you. Maybe you should just ask your question Margaret. Are you talking any further on that Glenn?
Drummond, are we coming on to Drummond House then? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so Drummond then was inspected in January 2020 during quite an unusual set of circumstances. And I think that's reflected in the findings of the inspection. Firstly, the manager was absent for a long-term period. Secondly, we had some staffing capacity issues within the house. Thirdly, there was a particularly challenging group of young people in the house at the time. And fourthly, over and above that, there were one or two admissions on an emergency basis. And all that created, I think, was a recipe for some tensions, certainly between the children, young people that were in the house at the time of the inspection. You'll see in the inspection report that the inspectors noted the external senior managers, that being Alison and Mark responded positively to that. But nonetheless, there were issues that they identified, hence the four adequates, the one good and the seven areas for improvement. Since the inspection, Mark, Alison have addressed that, they've put a number of measures in place. We now have a full management team back in the house. We have a full staff group in place. We have weekly meetings on all of the young people and required activities and staffing levels to support those activities. We carry out a weekly incident analysis and discuss those analyses in team meetings. We have monthly partnership team around the child meetings on all of the young people in the house. We're delivering training on trauma in full on practice and staff supervision and child's plans are also routinely audited by Mark as a senior manager. So since the inspection took place, the house has become much more settled. We received a green light very early on during Covid from the care inspector in terms of our approach towards the pandemic, notwithstanding the fact that the pandemic was particularly challenging for young people under wandering at any given time. And I'd also like to say if I may, that as you can see, the report despite all that did identify a number of positives, positives including good relationships, affectionate care, opportunities for young people to make their views known, young people exercising lots of choice, risk assessment and management plans improving since last inspection and being of good quality. So I think the inspection was carried out during a particularly unusual set of circumstances. As I say, the inspectors said that we responded positively to those sets of circumstances. Nonetheless, there were issues, we've addressed the issues and the house is much more settled now, including during the Covid period.
Okay, councillor Richardson.
Thank you convenor. Having four adequates and one good for a house that's looking after, you know, children with so many issues, I don't believe is a good place to be. And I'm glad to see that improvements have been, you know, starting to take effect. I was particularly concerned about, you know, the concerns expressed about living in the house, the behaviours of some residents, damaging the property, drug misuse and bullying made it difficult not only for the staff but for the residents. Given that you had staff resourcing issues, was none of that kind of fed back to you before the actual inspection process that the staffing issues obviously would have an impact of all this sort of behaviours going on?
So it's a good question again councillor Richardson. Yes, certainly the staffing issues were fed back to us. And certainly in terms of the management vacancy, we put an alternative manager in the house with some extra support. I think it's unfortunate though that that manager was relatively inexperienced and was put in a situation where they had to manage a group of particularly difficult young people on top of some emergency admissions, in top of what at the time was a depleted staff resource overall. Although obviously we were following the usual recruitment process in terms of filling those vacancies. What we've said is that what we should really have done is anticipated those problems and proactively provided extra support from the very outset. And I think if anything from this, that is the learning for us as a central management team. We should have anticipated these issues and we should have proactively provided extra support before these problems emerged and or escalated. So we take the point, we know that four ratings of adequate isn't good. We're disappointed with that, but hopefully you'll hear from the explanation I've given today that the actions we've taken. that the actions we've taken have addressed the situation and that the house is now much more settled.
Thanks for that, yeah.
Good. Billy Scott?
Thanks. Yeah. The, yeah, it's a disappointing report. And I know you said there were unusual set of circumstances at the time of the visit, but we should really be in a position to be able to respond to unusual circumstances. And quite often in the past, we've had reports about staffing levels not being adequate. And, and the next report talks about the service needs to develop the system used for assessing staffing levels to meet their needs and reduce risk. This one talks about as well. And I just can't understand why we haven't got a robust system in place that assesses the staffing levels required at any given time at all our homes and the, and the, the needs of the young people that are in there. I wonder if you, could you tell me the age range of the children that are in this, in this house?
So Bailey's got their age from 11 up to potentially 21 if they elect to remain in continuing care after they reach 17.
Because I was, I was concerned to read the article, the item about drug misuse. And I just wondered what actions you take when you discover that there's an occupant of the, the home has got a, is misusing drugs. So I wonder if you could deal with that one, but also why we don't seem to have, repeatedly don't seem to have sufficient staffing in place to deal with issues when they arise?
Okay, so it's just two questions then, one on the staffing levels and one on the substance misuse issue. Could I possibly ask the senior manager for the house, Mark McCauley, to answer both those questions? Mark is, I believe, with us on, on the call.
Yes, thanks, thanks, thanks councillor Scott. In regards to the drug issues, we do respond to that, then we don't just let it go. And we responded by getting police coordination meetings and a bit of extra education, teaching and learning involving the police and set up drug groups for the young people to attend. And then they did attend and that was quite successful, successful in two regards. One is it stopped the drug use to a certain extent and also improved the relationships between the young people and the police as well. And as well as that, we engaged with an agency called Hillcrest Futures. And each one of the young people involved at that point was referred to that agency. And there was an element of engagement there too. And I must say that intervention has helped and it's certainly reduced the amount of, one, charges and police calls and the amount of drug use in general. So, so that's kind of hopefully countered that and we'll monitor that on an ongoing basis. In terms of the staffing levels, it was particularly high at that time in Drummond House, but that's not an issue at all now. And the absence isn't an issue and it's not impacting on the capacity or the service delivery at all at the moment. And what the inspectors alluded to within the inspection was the deployment of staff and meeting the needs of the young people. And you're absolutely right to mention across all the other houses because what we have now is a standard format where we can monitor and review the deployment of staff to ensure that the right levels of staff are there to meet the young people's needs. So we're matching that up with the young people's needs and their personal plans and the diaries and the rotas of the staffing schedules. So I've been monitoring that on an ongoing basis and I'm confident that there's definite improvements been made there.
Okay, I just wondered how you are able to, to deal with such a wide range of ages as well from 11 to 21, because the new seven or eight-year-old are going to be quite different to those of, of, of an older person. The, the pressure that might be on the older people to, to, on the younger people might be quite significant as well. So just wonder how you deal with that and how you determine which homes young people should go to to make sure that there's a proper age balance?
Well, I think on the basis of last inspection as well, as Glen alluded to, there was a number of emergency admissions made at that point. And what we have put in place as a senior management team now is a more of a, a more robust decision-making process in terms of admissions. We have an emergency admissions procedure now to make sure and determine that we get the right people in the right places, the young people. And we look closely at the current dynamics and we look closely at the risk assessments around that. I mean, I must say the young people, although it's a registration requirement, and our registration schedule says 11 up to 20, but we're very carefully trying to match that. And the current group of young people in Drummond House and indeed all the houses at the moment, there is only like two or three here between the youngest to the oldest. So they're all ranging from 14 years and the highest is about 18 years at the moment. We're actually careful matching in place. It was just unfortunate that particular thing last year that we were unable to do that matching process as we would have liked.
Thank you.
Can I follow up, Billy McPherson? And can I maybe follow up on the question that Bailey Scott just said? In relation to the formula for staffing, what could you give to the committee that would demonstrate something that was easily understood? That the resource would either follow the individual or that the resource is adequate in each of the houses? Because it does come up on a few occasions as a bit of an issue.
Yeah, sorry councillor. Sorry, do you want me to answer that one?
If I start perhaps, Mark, and then you come in with some, some detail. Bailey Keenan Committee, it used to be the case that the care inspector required us to have a set number of staff in all of the houses at any given time. So we needed to have at least two members of staff in each of the five houses at any given time. Standard approach. Relatively recently, we changed that to say that the staff numbers needed to reflect the risks and needs presented by each group of young people in each of the houses at any given time and the planned activities that were in place in relation to that. So they moved away from a standard system to a much more dynamic system where we change, adapt the numbers of staff on an ongoing basis depending on different needs and risks presented by the particular young people. And Mark has been doing that. Mark has been ensuring that there are sufficient staff within each of the houses. Something, I think what we've had with Drummond here, as we say though, is a particular set of issues that particular time, which combined together to create the outcomes of this, of this inspection. Since then, the staffing levels have returned to acceptable levels. And we've known from that feedback, as I said, from the caring inspector at the other stages of the outbreak, we know that they're quite satisfied with the staffing roles and now also watching that we reflect the level of risk and need on a daily basis.
Okay. Okay, I'm just questioning whether we had an individual that, you know, almost needs one-to-one, then, you know, how, how would we cope with that if we've staff adequate everywhere and, and need to deliver that other person? How, how do we go about turning that tap on?
So, again, Bailey Keenan, that's a good question because sometimes we do get particularly challenging individual people. And, and sometimes we don't just have to consider our own internal resources, but we have to work with partner agencies to provide extra support as, as well. Bearing in mind that, that many of these children are attending school, many of these children can and should participate in activities in the community. So where a young person's particularly challenging, we might, for instance, enlist the support of a third sector organisation to engage them in extra activities in the community, to divert them towards other more positive things, to disrupt patterns of behaviour which aren't particularly easy to manage within, within the house. And we could give a number of examples or case studies in, in this regard, not just from Drummond, but also from the other four houses as well.
Okay. Billy McPherson?
Thanks, Convenor. I had a couple of questions. Maybe I missed it, but I couldn't see anything in here that indicates when the care inspector would return. And I, I would have perhaps thought, given the honestly disappointing report, you know, and I concur with the concerns that you councillor Richardson and Bailey Scott have, have highlighted. And I would have thought that we might have had some indication because given the reassurances that Glen and Mark have given, one would hope that we would get a more rosy picture, shall we say, if we had, you know, when inspectors return. So suppose my question is in relation to that, what's, you know, if, if there's no intention to return, what's the likely timescale? And my other question is really around the concerns under what, what the service could do better. It was really around the mental health problem issue. And as you'll have read, the inspector felt that some staff were not confident about providing effective support for young people with mental health problems and other complex needs. And I would have hoped and sort of thought that given the number of facilities operated, that we would have something of a strategy, a protocol, if you like, in place for bringing in support for young people who have mental health problems, so that we have a quality of support across, you know, the various services the city council provides. And I was just really wondering if you can give some reassurance that we've not got a situation where a young person with mental health issues is failing to get the sort of support that we would really want them to be having?
Okay, thank you again, Bailey McPherson. Again, two questions, one on the, the frequency of care inspections and oversight and one on how we respond to, to mental health issues. And they visit more or less every 12 months. And certainly pre-Covid, visited every 12 months, proportionate level of inspection, given the vulnerability of young people in, in, in the houses. And obviously that's been disrupted as a result of Covid. But during Covid, we've been in regular dialogue with our link inspector from the care inspector, providing him with regular updates on progress within each of, of, of the five houses. In terms of when they next carry out an inspection, obviously things again have been disrupted by Covid. And I believe that the care inspector are currently considering their approach towards a methodology for inspections, given that they may not be able to do that on, in the same hands-on basis that have done previously. So I don't believe we can yet give a clear indication as to whether they'll next inspect the houses, other than to say that like all of us, they're reviewing that and no doubt they will try and carry out an inspection as soon as possible. In the meantime, we'll maintain that regular, that regular dialogue with them. In, in terms of mental health, each of the young people in each of the houses have an allocated social worker. The social worker is responsible for carrying out the assessment, developing the plan and either providing directly the support that's required or coordinating the support from other services. They're generally very, very good at doing that. That service might involve, from a mental health perspective, simply some low-level guidance and advice if a child is in distress at any given time. Or it might involve, if the mental health problems are more acute, a referral to the Child and Adolescent Mental Health Service within NHS Tayside. And they will provide support, provide the criteria. I think the specific issues regarding mental health within the houses related to the capacity of staff within the houses to understand and provide appropriate guidance where there was a mental health issue, whatever that might be, whether it's low level or high level, whether, whether it's simply a situational issue involving some distress in direct response to some circumstances or whether it's more pronounced and long-term. It was around the capacity of the staff within the houses. And as we say, what we've done is implemented more rigorous training within and between each of the houses on mental health generally and within that on approaches towards trauma-informed practice. But as you can see from the other house and hopefully again from the next report on Fairburn, generally the houses have been very good at de-escalating situations, managing distressing behaviour and supporting the young people in a caring and affectionate manner. And that in fact is one of the positives highlighted in this inspection as well, the Drummond House.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. Obviously we've had a lot of reassurance this afternoon, which is welcome. And we'll obviously look forward to hearing, you know, a, a, a very positive outcome from the next inspection. However, that's carried out, I understand the, the challenges facing the care inspector and indeed other inspectors at the minute in relation to the Covid emergency. But we will obviously hopefully have a, a, a more positive report in relation to the areas of concern. Because there were positives in there, it's just, but, but in relation to the areas that we've highlighted of, of concern, well, hopefully the actions that you've taken will make a difference.
Okay, there doesn't appear to be any other questions on that even. Can I maybe ask that both Gilburn and Drummond are, are approved? Is that okay? Okay, we'll move on to the next item then, which is Fairburn. And for on yourself again then Glen.
Okay, thank you, Bailey Keenan. The third house, Fairburn, was inspected in November 2019. Inspected in two areas and received gradings of good in both of those areas. One being on supporting the wellbeing and care of young people and one being on, on planning. There were no areas for improvement, no requirements, no recommendations. But the inspectors did say that there were some things that the team thought they could do better. You'll see the detail of that in paragraph 4.3. They included recording and reviewing searches, the need to have a designated child protection officer, key worker support meetings where we obtained young people's views on the nature of support and support to the young people from a nurse on smoking sensation, cessation. We've implemented all of those actions. And the house is settled. The grades of good, as you can see, reflect a history of goods and very goods over the last three years. I don't know if you have any questions at all.
Okay. Fraser, you'll come in? You're on mute, Fraser.
As the saying goes, I pressed, pressed the wrong button there, but my apologies. And yeah, a, a good, good outcome, I have to say, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of positives in this. My question was just really around the point that the inspector made about the need for young people's views to be more evident in their plans. Now again, going back to, you know, with a number of houses and facilities, and I would have thought we would have something of a protocol to ensure that that happens. And I'm just really wondering how we get consistency to ensure that all young people feel that their views actually count and, 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 and influence their plans going forward?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Again, a good question, there is an answer, but if I may, could I ask Mark to answer that as, as well in terms of the detail?
You're on mute, Mark.
Can you hear me now? Sorry about that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. In terms of the views of the young people being represented, they are generally throughout the care planning process. And what was set up now is more key, key worker support meetings for the young people so that their views are better represented through their care plans and evidence and recorded that way. And we have ongoing contact with the Who Cares Scotland representatives and advocacy service who come into the houses now once a week to meet with the young people. So if ever the young person is ever scared or are not willing to put his views across personally at a professional meeting, the Who Cares advocate is able to do it for them now. So these things, the, the key worker support meeting has been introduced and the Who Cares Scotland advocacy meetings coming into the houses now. And hopefully I'll counter that and provide better evidence to the inspector for the next inspection.
Okay. Any other questions on this report? No. Is this report agreed? Okay. Glen, just before you go, maybe if you could, and, and Mark obviously take back our appreciation for the efforts that people put in, you know, I'm sure that for the staff it's disappointing to receive a report that's no as shiny and good as it normally are. You know, and, and staffing issues are, are not the fault of any individual, they're the fault of councils. And so, you know, I appreciate the efforts that they put in to make sure that each of the looked-after children get dressed and, and that's also the council want. So if, if you could pass on these words to people, to say we appreciate what they do. Thanks for that.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan, I appreciate it. I will too, we'll do that, we'll do that today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So move on to the next item then, Tracy.
Okay, the next item, joint city plan and council plan progress report. This was previously submitted to the Policy and Resources Committee.
Is there any questions on this report? Is that agreed? It's agreed then? Okay. Move on then, Tracy.
Okay, item 12, Covid-19 recovery risk register. Again, this has been to Policy and Resources.
Again, is there any questions that people are looking asked on this report? Is that agreed?
I was actually going to give, sorry to interrupt, I was going to give a little bit of an overview on that report just because it's been remitted to scrutiny committee for further consideration.
Okay.
If that's okay?
That, that is.
Okay, thank you. So as Tracy said, this report was presented to Policy and Resources Committee on the 24th of August. As I said, it has been remitted to scrutiny committee for further consideration. And this is the first report to elected members specifically relating to Covid-19 related risks. And through its development, there was a read-over to the council's recovery plan as well. council's recovery plan, as well as the service level recovery plans when the register was being developed. You'll see it's section five of the report describes how the risk register itself was developed. And Colin Carmichael, who is the council's corporate risk management coordinator, who helped facilitate the development of the risk registers on the call today, in case anyone has any detailed questions, he might be able to help there. Obviously, as you all know, COVID-19 has impacted communities, organisations and individuals on a global scale. And as the council moves into the recovery phase, a number of risks are emerging, which need to be actively considered, managed and mitigated. So to help support that process, and inform the decision-making process as well going forward, the council has developed this corporate level COVID-19 recovery risk register. The register itself, which is appendix A to the report, contains 20 risks, along with corresponding controls in place to mitigate their likelihood and/or impact, the control gaps and actions that require to be addressed to bridge those gaps, and also a number of opportunities have been identified that need to be considered. The register, just to let you know, going forward, will be reviewed by CMT, but its ongoing maintenance and development will be the responsibility of the head service throughout the organisation. And the corporate risk management working group will also have a role in that. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Or as I said, Colin Carmichael is also on the call.
Can I maybe ask them one question in relation to the risk register? When when government make an announcement every three weeks, how often are we reviewing the risk register, given that any decision that might have been taken or or legislation that will come into place may have an effect to the risk register and the need for it to be reviewed?
Do you want me to take that, Pamela?
Convenor, if I could just come in first of all on that question. So I'll start off. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So the corporate risk register, as Pamela's outlined, is a really high-level document, and officers are required to keep this under review. But in response to your specific question, what I'd want to make committee aware of is that every day, officers are looking at risk assessment, service level risk registers. So it's those that are in effect being kept up to date. But they are looking at the general corporate risk registers, what they've got in front of you. And what we need to do is make sure that this document is used as a look forward, and it informs decisions that were taken at a corporate level. But just to give you that assurance at a local level, there'll be individual plans and risk assessments that services are looking at frequently, that will be keeping up to date with them, any update news on any changes or indeed comments that come from staff trade unions, as well as both governments. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah. I mean, I just suppose I just wonder if legislation change could knock some of this on the head?
Absolutely, Bailey Keenan. If there was a significant change in legislation, then officers would be looking at the COVID risk register corporately, and then we would be coming back to the relevant committee and reporting that change. But just to give you the assurance that we are keeping this under review, and if there are substantial changes, it will be brought back sooner than the anticipated review period.
Billy Scott?
Yeah, I just wondered if some of these risks would be added to the 2020-21 internal audit plan, because this risk register was compiled quite some time after we got the 2020-21 internal audit plan to agree.
So that's a really good question. And as you know, the internal audit plan for Dundee City Council was compiled quite late in the day this year. And that meant that I was in a good position actually to factor in some of the risks that you'll see already in this risk register. So we've been able to factor time into the plan already to provide advice and guidance to services surrounding the development of new and/or changed processes and systems established to respond to the continually changing COVID situation, and also factor time into the plan to carry out an appropriate time or times, a review to ensure that the key business operations and their associated governance and control frameworks are appropriately and timiously re-established. So I think because of the delay in the audit plan, as a result of the April scrutiny committee being cancelled, it meant that as these risks were starting to evolve, I could take them into consideration. But I will be more so than ever before monitoring the plan on an ongoing basis. And if we do feel that there are risks that need to be factored into the plan, then obviously, I will bring them back to scrutiny committee for approval, because that would have a knock on effect to delivery of other reviews that are in there at the moment.
I know we've dealt already with the internal audit plan, but it says in there that it's 800 days you've got for the internal audit. Is that going to be sufficient, given all this additional items that they might be to have to look at?
At the moment, I think it is. But like I said, it needs to be under constant review. And again, I do have a responsibility to report back to you if I feel there's not enough resource. But at the moment, I do feel it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There appear to be any other questions on this. Could this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Okay, item 13, COVID-19 Guide for Audit and Risk Committees.
And thanks, Convenor. So on the agenda today, you'll see a number of reports that have come through from Audit Scotland. This one focuses on a guide for audit and risk committees, those functions which are discharged by the council through scrutiny. The report notes that COVID-19 has had a significant impact on every aspect of society in Scotland, and individuals, communities, public service and the economies. And part of the report provides a guide around some of the short-term challenges facing public bodies and the response to the pandemic. During this phase, key areas have been identified that will need to be focus of the the risk and audit committee or indeed scrutiny, which include internal controls and assurance, which Pamela just outlined, financial management and reporting, governance and risk management, which has been part of the agenda earlier on. Exhibits one to four also contain sets of questions in relation to these four areas, which members of scrutiny and wider council may want to consider. Happy to answer any questions or any other officers on the call today that you may have relating to this report.
Okay. So any questions? So the report agreed? Okay. Thank you then, Tracy.
Okay, item 14, COVID-19 Emerging Fraud Risks.
And thanks, Convenor. So again, this is another report from Audit Scotland, which is focusing as a result of COVID-19, the risks of fraud and error have increased as organisations become stretched and controls and governance are changing. And that could include things like remote working, which the council and other bodies within the UK have deployed, increased cybercrime, and also support packages that have been made available by UK and Scottish government that councils or other public bodies have had to support. And there are other areas around governance, procurement, IT and cybercrime. Section two of the report focuses on what public bodies can do to reduce these, and suggests again things that we've covered earlier around risk management and internal controls. And section three of the report focuses on the risks to the public, and the council has been very proactive with this approach, with regular updates going out via the council website and social media, warning the public of scams, which are either directly or indirectly covered by COVID-19. And section four of the report covers national contacts, which would be useful information for elected members and members of the public. So again, Convenor, I'm happy to take any questions that members of committee may have relating to this report.
Okay. Now, it's Billy McPherson's got a question.
Thanks, Convenor. In relation to 4.2, it correctly points out that staff have been working remotely and under extreme pressure. And I think, you know, I would certainly want to place on record that my appreciation for the hard work staff, they've been absolutely exemplary. And we found, as elected members of the council, the same high quality of replies to things and dealing with things despite the challenges. And I think, you know, I'm very grateful for the efforts that our staff right across departments have have made during what has been an extremely challenging time, and I suspect will remain an extremely challenging time for some time to come. My question, and I've touched on this with Mr. Colgan already, and I'd be grateful if you could perhaps update us. The council, at very short notice, along with the other 31 councils in Scotland, was asked by Scottish government to pay out many millions of pounds of business support grant monies, which I have to say was done in a very efficient fashion. I think, you know, nudging 30 million pounds worth of funding, not our money, but public money, just the same, went out the door to businesses at a time that that support was absolutely vital to assist businesses locally. Now, it strikes me that it's blatantly obvious that, not necessarily Dundee, but across Scotland, across the UK as a whole, there will have been fraudulent claims. But there will also have been claims paid out in error. Human error is bound to have happened when you're dealing with high volumes of, and exceptionally high volumes of some quite complex claims being made at short notice. Now, I'm equally conscious of the fact that reclaiming something paid in error, or, you know, trying to tackle any potentially fraudulent claim is a resource for the council. And quite clearly, it's Scottish government money we're talking about here. But there's a requirement on the part of any public sector body to do what it can to ensure that any problems with, you know, I'm sure the vast majority of these claims are perfectly fine. But I was just really wondering if Mr. Colgan can indicate to us what steps the Scottish government's taking to support councils to deal with that? And if there are any, you know, if there has been any progress in that regard, to ensure that, you know, from an audit point of view, we are happy that the significant funding that went out the door has been paid correctly to the correct people?
And thanks, Bailey McPherson, Convenor. I'll start the response to that. So from the outset, the scheme that Dundee City Council operated in terms of administering and delivering the business grants, we involved the internal audit team and the finance accounting team to look at controls and segregation of duties, to make sure that there was no one user that could assess and make payment. So from the outset, before the scheme began, we took quite a strong line in terms of controls that we put in place. And as you rightly said, Bailey McPherson, due to the scale and the pace, then there will be claims that perhaps have been made in error, and there may also be claims that have been made fraudulently. And we also were quite robust in terms of the information that we requested from businesses in terms of proving they were trading, and bank statements, et cetera. In terms of recovery, we are using our internal resources through the corporate fraud team, and using some guidance that's been set down by Scottish government for recovery. And as a part of the working group, along with Karen Donnicky, we're speaking with Scottish government around any opportunities to fund some of that work, if we find there are excessive or large amounts of recovery or fraud that we are seeing. At this time, it's not on too large a scale, but we obviously continue to to look at that going forward. We're also looking at the work through Directors of Finance and IRRV, to make sure that we're sharing that intelligence in terms of the scale and potential numbers, obviously not releasing any confidential information, to make sure that collectively, we're all singing almost in a singular voice when we're approaching potential funding levels for the recovery and indeed any fraudulent claims, and should they progress to legal. So hopefully, that gives you some assurance and answers your question.
That's very helpful indeed. You mentioned an organisation there that I should probably declare an interest about. But, you know, I'm grateful to learn about the internal controls, which are absolutely vital. I think that's 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 very helpful. And indeed the level of verification, which again, is really important if you're going to ensure that you have confidence in the payments that have been made. And certainly, I feel that if we, you know, at the end of the day, local government bluntly did Scottish government a favour by, and a very big favour, by getting this money to local businesses. Obviously, it was in everybody's interest that that happened. But what we don't want is a hugely onerous follow-up without any admin resource, you know, financial resource to assist that, you know, that that administration of that. And that will be the case right across Scotland, not just in Dundee. So grateful for that. And I hope that if it does become onerous, there will be some funding coming forward to enable local authorities to complete the job, as it were.
I'll no hold but breath waiting on the funding coming, Fraser.
You can, but ask.
Well, I think it's worth a ask. Any other questions on this report? Can that report be agreed? Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Item 15, Internal Audit Reports.
Thanks, Tracy. So I have two internal audit reports this time around. One is a follow-up review of Health and Safety and Leisure and Culture Dundee, and the other is a review of two partnerships, the Streetlighting Partnership and the Roads Maintenance Partnership. So I'll just take each one in turn, as I normally do. In relation to the follow-up review, the objective was to assess whether or not each of the recommendations agreed by management in a previous report. So an internal audit report 2017-16 had been implemented within the given time scales. We concluded from our fieldwork that while some action's been taken to strengthen the control weaknesses highlighted in the original review, that there's still some areas that require to be addressed. Those main areas that are still outstanding are around reviewing and approving the individual service area nine scorecard service, the area section nines annually in line with policy. And I believe I have actually been advised that these have now been updated. And the policy itself, just to let you know, it was reviewed and updated in July 19. Another area is around reviewing the fire risk assessments and highlighting any outstanding or overdue assessments. And that's something that Leisure and Culture Dundee need to do alongside city development. They need to work together on that. And then the third main area is around ensuring that the register, which they maintain with all the risk assessments on it, contains all the required information. So for example, the date of the last completion assessment and the next review date, and that also there's evidence available to confirm that the head of service has carried out a review. So those are the areas that are outstanding.
Because can I answer the question as to whether anyone knows when these will be completed? Given that, you know, a fire risk assessment, obviously, some we wouldn't want to have a fire. I think we were accused of having that in one of our schools, where a fire risk assessment identified some issues and nothing was done about it. So what's the intention of addressing that? And how quickly will it be addressed?
So I can tell you that management have agreed to take forward that specific point before the 31st of October this year. That's the implementation date that I've been given.
I would have liked to have seen things done a wee bit quicker than that. But I know it's difficult times at the moment, and buildings aren't particularly open. But we'll just accept that's where it is at the moment. Yeah. councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Convenor. My point was also on the fire risk assessments. I mean, I would like to know at this date, at this point in time, how many of these risk assessments are haven't been carried out, that should have been carried out? And what is the main reason why they may not have been carried out, given the significance and the importance of these assessments?
You will give any answer on that, Pamela? Are you going to have to come back to it?
No, but Colin Craig's on the line, so he might want to speak about that.
Okay.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Convenor. There's no outstanding FRAs. I think what should be understood is that FRAs can be conducted either annually, or normally up to about three years. We have a fire safety officer in coast who has reviewed all these. And so it is a case, there is FRAs in place, but it's just to see if there's any requirement for any updates on them. And that is reviewed ongoing, actually, for all premises that we have. So not actually overdue ones, if you like. But what we do is we will put FRAs or we'll review the FRAs. But it might be two years, it might be two years, three months. So there's a bit of play there, if you like.
Thank you. But given the complexity of when you're carrying them out and all the rest of it, is that surely the updating of the key information on the risk register is even more important, and should be done as and when, as soon as possible after these assessments are carried out, so that folk know what the position is? I mean, we would like as a committee to be reassured that these assessments are being carried out. that these assessments are being carried out and their evidence has been carried out is the key thing. And I see that as being particularly important in terms of this issue.
Yes, we do, we do have a register which details all FRAs, when they're due and when they're undertaken. The process is that an FRA will be undertaken. It's then passed to the department and the duty holders there will action. Whatever actions come out of the FRA, they can be from two weeks' action period up to six months. A lot of it is quite minor, but we monitor that. And what we're also doing in terms of this report to give senior management comfort and sight of it, we're not only just distributing the FRAs to each individual building manager, we've now got a central point of contact within LECD and other departments, actually. Where they themselves will also be given that FRA to see what points that should be carried out, are being carried out. And we ourselves as a department run a monitoring process, an audit process, where we will follow up and do checks on the premises to ensure they've been done. So it's a kind of a two-check system, if you like.
Okay, thanks for that. Convenor, is it, would it be appropriate to ask internal audit to do a follow-up review before the end of the year? Just to ensure that these are now up to date?
It's not inappropriate. What would be your normal procedure for that then, Pamela?
So the normal protocol would be that it would then fall into the progress review annual exercise. But I'm just looking at the dates, the new dates for implementation are probably post-cut-off for the progress review exercise this year. But I'm quite happy to set some time aside to follow up on that.
Okay. Can I maybe ask the question? Seeing we seem to be saying what we've got is adequate, but we've got an internal audit that's blew the water. How did we get ourselves in that position? You know, if we're arguing that, yeah, everything's up to date and the internal audit says it wasn't and you haven't, and we've come back and reviewed you and it's still not, how have we got ourselves in that place?
I think it's a case of the timescales for the FRA is, as I say, it's guidance and we will make a judgement call, especially with the fire safety officer, in terms of which premises it is, whether that is conducted annually or over, up to a period of three years. So there's always a, there's not an absolute definitive it will be done on this month every time. There's always a bit of flex, if you like, and it depends on the properties. So they are in place, the FRAs are in place. It's just a matter of when we review them. And the key thing is if there's been any material change in the premises since the last FRA, the departments would advise us of that. And then we would, if we deemed necessary, conduct another FRA to change, to reflect the changes that are happening within that premises.
Maybe I don't fully understand what we're trying to do then. It would appear to me that internal audit would come in, look at a date, suggest you've no complied with. And you're saying, but up my sleeve, I had the ability to move that six months or a year. So I didn't really need to bother too much about what internal audit's saying. How did we get into a position where internal audit's suggesting we're no compliant, you're suggesting, yeah?
Yes, I don't, I don't think it's a case of being compliant. All premises have FRAs in place. It's just as and when they're scheduled. If we review them, we may review and say there's not a requirement for a further FRA at this time. So it's not a case we're not compliant with any premises. There is FRAs for all premises.
I'll maybe follow up with some of you with the meeting because I'd like a bit more detail showing me how we got to an audit position of saying we've no made it and you suggesting that we've, everything's, everything's in place, you know, and we're unable to sign off on it. Seems strange to me.
I think, I think I would add to that, just to say that at the time of the follow-up review, there were some anomalies between the records that were being maintained by city development and the records that were being maintained by Leisure and Culture Dundee. Obviously, the council as the landlord is responsible for ensuring that a full and sufficient fire risk assessment's carried out. But Leisure and Culture Dundee as tenants are also responsible for reviewing the fire risk assessments and ensuring, as Colin said, that the actions arising from the assessments are implemented. So I think there's a bit about both Leisure and Culture Dundee and city development working together to share that information so that Leisure and Culture Dundee know when a fire risk assessment's been carried out and then they can take forward the actions that come out of that. It's around the controls that we looked at.
So how do we get to that and not be waiting till October? If we're suggesting everything's okay, how do you get sign off on this early?
Convenor, could I come in if that's okay? An apology for coming into the meeting. I just haven't got my hands up function working. So I think what the members are basically saying is you need assurance that given some of the historic challenges we've had in the city with the problems associated with fires, that first of all, the fire risk assessments are up to date, that you've got clear understanding and can comment upon the risk assessment basis about how frequently those are reassessed. And also, I think importantly, how well we've complied with. Because a fire risk assessment is one thing, but the building management require to comply with that and make sure that the risk is actually managed. And many of the instances we've experienced in the past are concerned about the latter, not the former. So why don't I connect to bringing back a report with scrutiny, which tries to give you a much fuller analysis of the position and allow members to scrutinise that as early as we possibly can?
I think that would be useful. Okay, does that agree? Thanks for that then. So we'll move on to the next item then.
So sorry, there was still another internal audit report there.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the internal audit I'm moving on to, yeah.
All right, thank you. So in terms of the review of Street Lighting and Roads Maintenance Partnership, we reviewed the governance arrangements in place to manage and monitor the partnerships. This is a really positive report and we have concluded that, from the work that we carried out, that there's a sound system of control in place. In fact, just to note, there was no significant areas for improvement identified in relation to the Roads Maintenance Partnership. And in relation to the Street Lighting Partnership, the main area for improvement was around the development of a five-year street lighting improvement plan, which is a requirement in the partnering agreement. But to be fair on management, they were aware of this and the action had already been incorporated into the improvement agenda to take it forward. And also just to give you assurance that there is an annual service plan in place.
Good. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convenor. I think, you know, clearly positive in relation to both the street lighting and road maintenance partnerships. And I think that just reinforces the view certainly I have of well-managed partnerships that do well. My question is around the street lighting service improvement plan. And maybe in a way, it's slightly wider on street lighting itself. As I understand it, there's already an annual service plan with the, if you like, for the short term. And where the missing piece of the jigsaw, if you like, was to have something about long-term planning over five-year periods. Now, I would have thought in terms of consistency of service delivery across the council and indeed our partnerships, these being good examples. We would have a degree of consistency that you have some document, like an annual service plan, and you have your ambitions over the medium term in the other document. And I was just really wondering, is there that consistency across all areas where we have service provision? Because quite clearly, what I think we're highlighting here is the short-term annual plan was in place, but there was not a five-year medium-term view.
Maybe he's jumping to answer here, Fraser.
Sorry, councillor McPherson. Happy to answer that one if desired. The, the, the street lighting and roads maintenance partnerships are slightly unique in the regional approach that they're taking, particularly the street lighting service plan. So the five-year aspect of the street lighting service plan is aligned to particularly the changing environment, which the three councils, which make up the partnership with Tayside contracts, are facing. So the LED replacement programme, which is coming to fruition in the next five years in all areas, that'll make quite a dramatic change to both the requirements for servicing in the future and also investment. That's the reason why, because it's a shared, a shared development. They're looking particularly at a five-year plan on that one. The roads maintenance also has one. It's taken forward though, it was accepted by the audit that the five-year plan in place, which is undertaken through a tri-council maintenance strategy group. Same process, but because they're individual partnerships in the three areas rather than a one regional approach. So that's, that's why they're getting taken forward. In terms of the wider division, the other teams, they do feed into the city development service plan, which again incorporates all the roads and transportation aspects in there.
Okay, I'm grateful for that and particularly impressed with the fact that you're answering it, given your new role. So grateful to you for that. I was just really wondering, and it's perhaps more for the chief executive then, than yourself, Ewan. And that's really around, is the chief executive satisfied that there is both the shorter-term service, you know, annual service planning plus across other areas of, because I appreciate the partnerships are slightly unique, but across other areas of council provision, that you're satisfied that the longer term, the medium to long-term views is being considered by all areas of service provision?
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'm going to ask Andrea Calder to comment on that. But the short answer to your question is, we do have them, but we, I think, could improve the reporting of those selected members to allow more detailed scrutiny of them. But if your indulgence, convenor, I'd be asking Mrs Calder to comment.
Sure.
Thank, oh, thank you. And yeah, there is, there is quite a mixed bag on the service level planning across the council. And it's one of the key areas that we picked up under our self-evaluation. And it also flags in the best value audit that's due to be published. And so we've got an action plan in place that we're going to be discussing that with the council management team to set out a new standard that would then be consistent across all services. And that also includes reporting to the appropriate committee so that there's the actual detailed scrutiny at those committees. But also that there will be reporting of performance to those committees at least twice a year. So there'd be a mid-year and an annual report at that service level, drilling down into quite a bit of detail.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, doesn't appear to be any other questions. I'm agreed. Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Okay, item 16, integration joint board internal audit report.
Thank you. So this is a report for noting by the scrutiny committee. It's an IGB report on information governance and technology as enablers. A bit of background surrounding the review, just for you all. This review was carried out by my team on behalf of the IGB. And whilst you'll see it was finalised in January this year, there hadn't been a pack held to take the report until yesterday, hence the delay in bringing it to yourselves. The objectives of the review are detailed at section six of appendix A. And they relate to enabling and managing staff access to systems in both the NHS and council, including email systems, and also the related corporate support arrangements in place. The overall opinion given to this piece of work is a category D, which is inadequate. The scoring used in the report is that of FTF, Five Tayside and Fourth Valley Management Services to provide the chief internal auditor resource to the IGB. And as you know, the chief internal auditor for the IGB, who is Tony Gaskin, is also the chief internal auditor for NHS Tayside. An action plan containing six recommendations for improvement was agreed with management at the time. And you can find that action plan on pages eight to 13 of the appendix. The main areas for improvement you'll see are around governance. So just ensuring that there's adequate representation on key groups within each of the partners, developing a data and information sharing agreement, having a Tayside-wide forum to facilitate engagement of IT matters and documenting the process that should be followed when a member of staff from Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership requires access to either NHS or council systems. Also, on the flip side of that, that there's a process in place for levers. So ensuring that when someone leaves the employment of, for example, NHS Tayside and they have access to council systems, that that access is stopped timiously. You will see from the implementation dates on the action plan that they have lapsed. And so we did try and obtain an update in relation to progress. And I think just generally, it's probably fair to say that none of the areas that were identified for improvement have been fully addressed to date. Now, I'm not sure of the scrutiny that took place yesterday at IGB, but I will find out from my counterpart in due course.
councillor Richardson, have you got a question or comment?
Yes, thanks, convenor. Really, I was quite shocked to see that the opinion, the overall opinion in this report is that the, you know, it's inadequate and this basically increased risk objectives are not met. Given that we're basically talking about, you know, enabling access to staff so they can actually do their job. I mean, this surely must have quite a big impact on the effectiveness of working together and delivering the services. Not sure if there's anybody there that can speak to that. But I think it's fairly important, given this is a joint board and we're meant to be working together on it, that somebody from that should be speaking to the report to give us some assurances that things will be taken forwards in a timely manner.
Maybe ask the chief exec if he's able to make comment or indeed get someone along the next time to give that level of reassurance.
I'd be to do that, convenor. I mean, certainly, as you know, the chief officer of the IGB and the team report jointly to myself and to the chief executive of NHS Tayside. And any of the reports that come up that have improvement actions are a matter of conversation between ourselves and the chief officer and management team to ensure that actions are dealt with. And they're then, of course, reported to the performance and audit committee of the IGB. But certainly happy to give the assurance that councillor Richardson seeks, that these are taken seriously and that steps are taken to make sure that actions are in place. And I'm happy to provide further information on that in the future. Appreciate the support for noting, but it's still important to take into account any concerns that members of the scrutiny committee have.
We've got a couple of people that didn't realise we're on the call, but we've got Vicky Irons and then Dave Berry who could maybe respond. So you want to go for it, Vicky?
Thank you, convenor. Yeah, just to reiterate, it does cause us quite significant issues just in terms of, I guess, the fluidity of our operations. And those have been exacerbated, I think, throughout the COVID pandemic response when some of that lack of compatibility does provide an extra pressure. But we are on top of it. It's a key risk which has been identified through our very recent kind of lessons learned exercise. So we will be progressing both this audit report and a recent risk review that's been undertaken within the partnership with both Dundee City Council colleagues and also NHS Tayside. Because obviously, they're, these are quite complex issues. There's no denying that. But we would want to see them work through so that we get to a better place. I'm sure David would also be happy to comment if required.
Yeah, thanks. Can I just add to that? So the question was asked about the, this was going to take to the performance audit committee yesterday. So yeah, that this was discussed and obviously there was concerns from the committee around the scoring there. But also kind of a feeling that it was actually quite a useful report from an IGB perspective because it kind of starts to raise kind of some of the concerns and some of the issues. And as you see from the action plan, there's a range of issues that we can, a range of actions that have been agreed and that we'll put in place to kind of resolve a lot of these issues. And the other thing just to say is The other thing just to say is the integration joint board has, has asked that we produce an IT strategy for the IGB, which will also help as we can move forward, give some kind of clarity around what it is that we need as an IGB or integrated services. And obviously that will be done in conjunction with both the council and NHS T-Side.
Happy enough with that, Margaret?
Yes. My only one concern that I do have is in terms of the dates, that things, a number of the actions should have already happened, you know, some of the dates are March 2020 and January 2020. So a lot of these actions should have already taken place and been done and dealt with almost pre-COVID or pre-lockdown time. But they're now sort of being carried forward into a, a time when things are even more difficult, if you like, to get things done because of COVID. So I would like to see something brought back to the, this scrutiny committee as soon as there is a follow-up to this, to this report.
Sure, I'm sure we're going to arrange that. Bailey Scott?
It would just to concur really with what councillor Richardson had said. Having read through the report, some of these items were agreed should be done way back in 2017, and it's really unsatisfactory that all this time on, we're still looking for these actions to be carried out. So I think it would be an idea if we could ask at a future meeting for the, the chief officer to come along to address some of these points, especially when you read that some of the NHS staff working in council buildings, and I appreciate that that might not be the case at the moment, but they're not even able to use our printers properly because of the, the, they're not fully integrated. So yeah, huge concern, and I hope the message goes back that we really need to get these things actioned.
Okay, we'll try to arrange that through the chief exec for, for an next scrutiny committee. Okay, is that report agreed? Thank you. Okay, Tracy?
Item 17, corporate fraud team activity and performance, including whistleblowing.
Thanks, convener. So I'm just going to ask Pamela Redpath to give a very brief and short update on the report, and then we can take any questions that members of the scrutiny committee may have. Pamela?
Thank you. So this report is to update you on the activity and performance of the corporate fraud team for the year to the 31st of March 2020. The report, as Greg mentioned, also includes information surrounding the council's whistleblowing activity for the same period. High-level points to note, then, you'll see the corporate fraud team identified savings of £56,582 from general investigative work. That includes £8,000 of notional savings relating to blue badges. And in addition to that, £304,563 of housing benefit fraud or error through the sharing of information with the single fraud investigatory service. Appendix one of the report, the first page of appendix one, provides a breakdown of 1920 corporate fraud team referrals and the information exchange statistics. You'll see there, there's a total of 256 referrals. And the second page of appendix one details the savings and other benefits identified during the year. In relation to whistleblowing activity for the same period, paragraph 4.5 in the report describes the process in place in the organisation relating to whistleblowing. And appendix two provides the whistleblowing statistics for the 12-month period to the 31st of March 20. You'll see there that we received 26 allegations this year, 24 of which are relevant to the council. We had 14 last year, just for comparison, and that's an increase of 71.4% since last year. And I think that this demonstrates really the positive culture that we're working in, that staff are happy to raise concerns that they've got. Also, just to let you know that there is commitment from officers throughout the organisation to continually promote the whistleblowing policy on an ongoing basis. Happy to take any questions.
Is there any questions on this report? Can I maybe ask one then, or the section 95 officer? In relation to notional savings, is it something that you would consider when it comes to setting the budget for the city council?
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So as you'll be aware, I'm happy to consider any savings that would offer a tangible cash saving that we could remove from budgets. And to give it an accurate and up-to-date comment, I would need to go away and look at those notional savings. However, they would have to be real and would then be removed from individual service budgets. And at this point, I'm not confident that would be the case for all of them, but I am happy to look at that and report back.
How come we managed to have a report with notional savings in it? Because I would have thought they potentially aren't real.
I think Bailey Keenan, without going into the detail, it's not about them being real savings, it's about whether or not they're cashable savings that can actually be removed from individual service budgets when taken into account of the level of the budget savings. And as I said earlier, I'm more than happy to look at those savings individually as reported and then come back to committee or indeed yourself with my professional view as to whether or not we can account for part of them, all of them or none of them.
Okay. Bailey Scott, you looking to come in?
Just wanted to ask a question on the paragraph that talks about several cases ongoing investigations with Police Scotland. I wonder if you're able to put a figure on what several cases are.
Thanks, Bailey Scott. So I think at this point, the report obviously outlines that there are several cases with Police Scotland. I don't believe it would be in the interest, and indeed, given that there's ongoing investigations, to put any further detail on that at this time. However, members of committee should be aware that when we are in a position to report back to you, then a full report will be considered on individual matters.
Okay. Is that report agreed? Okay, we'll move on, Tracy.
Item 18, national fraud initiative.
Thanks, convener. So again, I'd just like to ask Pamela to give a brief update on this report, given it's her team that have led some of the work that we're reporting on. Pamela?
Thanks, Greg. So this report is just to update you really on three main things. Firstly, the 1819 biennial NFI exercise, which identified savings of £101,634.53 of overpayments. And as a result of stopping those errors now, the NFI has estimated that the council's also saved a notional amount of £284,294 on top of that. Also to update you on the mandatory 1819 electoral roll and council tax single-person discount exercise, which identified £34,285.29 of overpayments. And you'll see the statistics at appendix one. And then lastly, really just to give you an update in the report around the preparations for the next biennial exercise, which is about to commence, the 2021 NFI exercise. And the data sets will be getting uploaded on the 9th of October this year for that. And linked to that really is the update which we've provided to you at appendix two, a copy of Audit Scotland's self-appraisal checklist for those charged with governance, which we have completed for you to look at and approve, and a copy of Audit Scotland's national report on NFI, which they compile at the end of every biennial exercise, just to communicate the key themes that were coming out of that. That's at appendix three. I'm happy to take any questions.
Bailey Scott, you have a question now?
Yeah, it's similar to your own earlier question, question on the last report about notional calculations. And it's to do with the deceased pension investigation, because I know Audit Scotland in their report highlighted as a case study, what, an incident of a Dundee pensioner living in Canada who has since died and the amount of pension they were getting paid. And I can see that to calculate the notional figure, you calculate what it would have been if the pension had been paid up until the age of 85. But if the individual has died, why would you use that calculation?
The notional amount is not calculated by the council. That's the NFI that calculate that on our behalf, using certain algorithms.
Okay. Maybe I should feed that question back to them then, because I can't see why you would take a notional figure, extrapolate it out to someone being aged 85, when they aren't actually now any longer receiving a pension because they, because they passed away.
I can look into it for you and come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions on the report? Is that agreed? Agreed? Okay, Tracy?
Okay, item 19, local government in Scotland overview 2020.
Thanks, convener. So I'll just give a brief outline of this report. So as members will be aware, we bring the local government finance overview reports to scrutiny. The last one was brought to scrutiny on the 12th of February. This report is split into three parts. The first part of the report focuses on the various challenge and complex landscape that contributes to the significant pressures from local government and its partners. The second part reflects on the core aspects that need to be considered by political leaders and leaders in the council to implement and plan change effectively. And the third part deals with a key study. There are key messages that arise in from the report that are detailed in section 4.3. Some of those that are in councils are working hard to deliver services in their community, but the context they are working in is increasingly uncertain and complex. And the full scale of collaborative working with partners and organisations and communities is not yet realised. And workforce planning is fundamental to ensure that councils have the staff skills, leaders, they need to deliver change. And when you consider the findings of the best value report, you'll see areas within the, around partnership and indeed how the council operates with its partners, which are positive. But the area of workforce planning is one that the council needs to consider forward. And whilst we've looked at an overall corporate workforce planning strategy, it's the service specific that we need to consider and look at more succession planning, given the age range of the council. And I know that's something Mrs Robertson has outlined to you before. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have on the report, convener. And I know we've got some colleagues from Audit Scotland on the call as well for a later item.
Is there any questions on this report? Is that report agreed? Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Item 20, COVID-19 implications for public finances in Scotland.
Thanks, convener. So this is the last suite of reports from Audit Scotland. This report notes the impact on public finances, which are unprecedented at this time due to COVID-19 and the response which has been made from both the UK and Scottish government. Part one of the report notes the fiscal response. Part two looks at the emerging and performance risk that Scottish government is facing as a result of COVID-19. And part three looks at what it means for Audit Scotland and how they operate to give a quality service and assurances around public finance, including local authorities. So again, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have specifically relating to this report.
So any questions on this report? Is this report agreed? Okay, that report's agreed. Tracy?
Item 21, Dundee House closure, 10th of 11th of December 2019.
Can you just introduce this briefly, if that's okay? So you'll recall, I think the scrutiny committee at a previous meeting asked for a report on the circumstances around the Dundee House closure. And hopefully the report in front of elected members is self-explanatory, but I'm sure there'll be questions from the committee in relation to it. It's happy to take any, and we have relevant officers on the call to answer them.
Okay. I think I'll see Billy McPherson?
Thanks, I don't think I was first there, what's up? But anyway, anyway.
No, it's, it's screens, the message is on the screen, it's blocked out others.
All right, no, no, no worries. It's a very brief question, really in relation to the point of 4.4, where it says that, yeah, it talks about what has been done by visual inspection, what cannot be inspect, cannot be inspected because of access restrictions and so on. And it indicates correctly, I think, that pipe work which cannot be inspected is assumed to be deficient and will be replaced. My question is, has that happened? When will that happen? What sort of timeframe are we talking about, given that obviously the, the particular incident was back, you know, last December?
Can you ask Neil Martin to comment on that?
Yes, thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. The progress that's been made on that obviously has been hampered during COVID. That, that said, the design is now complete and the documents will be going out for tender very shortly. So we would look to be getting the works programmed over the autumn period. Depending on how we go about that and the, the use of accommodation in Dundee House, the works would probably plan to be out of hours. But in light of where we are with Scottish government guidance and COVID, we might review that and manage to get some works done during the day. So the programme of works is still to be determined as the duration. So what, once we get the tender documents back, we'll review the actual programme and when the works will be carried out.
Could I just say, I think, given the circumstances and obviously the need to ensure that this work's carried out timiously, it'd be useful if the committee is kept updated with regard to progress on that, if that's, if that's okay.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Councillor Short?
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Mine's just a comment with regards to the fact that, if you remember, in February, we had the committee and, and it was discussed about the outage. And we look back now and we think, God, that was the worst thing that had ever happened to us. And now we've had six months of complete and utter different world scenarios. So, so those two days kind of come a little bit into perspective. So I think it's probably just an opportune moment to say, we were fleet of foot to get everybody out of Dundee House and operating on those two days, but what an absolutely fantastic job that has taken place. So to accommodate those six months that we've not been all accommodated in the offices that, that we're used to, and to thank everybody for probably a little bit of bad backs here and there, and maybe not getting always the internet that you're used to, and just play tribute to all of us who are working from home and continue to keep the same levels of professionalism and working really, really hard on behalf of, and to hopefully the benefit of the people of the city. So just wanted to give my thanks for that at this time.
councillor Richardson, are you looking to come in?
Yes, thanks, convener. As well as Fraser, I too had some issues in terms of paragraph 4.4, in terms of the cause of, of the failure. I mean, I feel, given that, okay, maybe not immediately we'll get the, the office, the Dundee House back populated to its full extent, given that an existing sort of visual inspection can't actually tell whether any more of this pipe work is exposed to the same kind of failure, pipe work failure that happened earlier. How, is there any way we can see whether or not this, this could happen again? That's the first question. And the second question really is in terms of paragraph three, the considering issues of liability for damage. Do we have any kind of estimate of those losses at the moment? And given that in paragraph 4.4, we're already saying that, you know, it looks quite simply that the, you know, it was fitted during the construction of Dundee House. What other issues are there that are being considered? Thank you.
So I want to answer these.
Yes, I'll, I'll maybe start with that, and perhaps Neil Martin can help maybe call in too with the detail around the pipe work. So thanks councillor Richardson again for the questions. I think when you get problems in buildings like this, they're rarely straightforward to disentangle the design liability, the construction liability, material liability, the role of the client, and the extent to which we can try and recover any exposure the council's had. So we're trying our level best to do that, make the best possible case, because I think as members would expect, and indeed I think was raised by councillor McGeary at the time when, when the request for this report, we need to make sure that we've tried to recover the council's losses. So we, we always take that seriously, we're in the process of trying to assess that just now. The exact nature of costs I'll leave to the technical professionals, if that's okay. Ask Neil.
In terms of the costs, obviously there's been the, the cost of the actual initial rectification.
In terms of the costs, obviously there's been the cost of the actual initial rectification. As you asked, Council Richardson, can it happen again? And there's approximately about six risers in the building. So hence why we've done the design work and we will be replacing them. Visual inspections have been kept in place during that period to mitigate any risk. Because that's not to say it couldn't happen again. On the basis that we've now got the IT servers out of the building, there's obviously less risk to the council. But obviously we don't want that to happen again. So the sooner this works carried out, the better. And then that will also be a cost that once we get the tenders in and the procurement carried out in a compliant manner, will give us an idea of the total cost of, of this issue. And any other disruption costs that we'll use with corporate finance on to come to an actual total for the incident involved.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I maybe ask a question? Is this sort of crimp a fairly standard method of producing or production in this kind of riser that you're putting in? And how long has it been used for? Was it relatively new? I would have thought, you know, sort of welding would have been the, you know, a better seal perhaps than, than a crimp on an 18mm pipe.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. My understanding is that in terms of the 80mm steel cabin pipes that have been used, that was quite a common practice, I'll say, at the time of the design and works done in Dundee House and what have got other buildings that have got these pipes. That said, since then, you're quite right in terms of going back to mild steel pipes in terms of bolt connections and welding where applicable as a standard specification that we're using to avoid putting any inherent potential dangers in pipe work going forward.
Can I maybe ask in relation to the gathering of costs, given that we leased part of that building to another organisation? And they would have been, they would have lost their day or so as production as well. What's the sort of consequential note? And, you know, our staff were out the building for a day and we didn't appear to be that much. We managed to keep the council looking like it was moving. But, you know, it would have been less than a productive day. So how do we gather up these costs? Should we be in a position to charge back any consequentials? Or any loss of income?
Thanks Bailey Keenan. I'll maybe come in and respond to your question on this one. I think that's work in progress at the moment. So there will be aspects that managers will know that we did provide. So for example, we continued to provide Scottish welfare fund payments. We continued to support all of the vulnerable people. But there will be elements that we would have to work on in terms of lost time and lost productivity. And that would also include speaking to the agency which rents the space in Dundee House. That information hasn't been completely gathered yet, but it's something depending on how this progresses. And working with Mr Many, we will look to gather and conclude so that we've got a clear picture of the total cost of what the burst pipe had to not just Dundee City Council, but also to the other partner who rents space in the building.
So do we see a further report coming back to scrutiny then?
I think, Convenor, that's a matter for you. Certainly what I'm happy to do is to, when we've got to that point, come back and let elected members know what the position is. If you feel a report's merited, obviously happy to deal with that at that point.
I think it'd be useful for going to get into point of litigation that this report comes somewhere. You know, so possibly it'd be best to come back to scrutiny and if all these costs were gathered up, it'd give an indication of what the loss was on the day.
Okay, I'll be happy to look at what the best way of bringing a report back on that to elected members is and happy to discuss it with you.
Okay, is this report then agreed? See any other questions?
Okay, the final item, Audit Scotland Review of Internal Controls in Financial Systems.
Thanks convenor. So I'd just do a brief introduction for this. We're also joined on the call today by Bruce Crosby, who's the audit manager for Audit Scotland and who leads the audit and also his deputy, Nilo Corner. So if it's agreeable, convenor, I'd just ask Bruce to give a brief overview of the Audit Scotland report. And then we're happy to take any questions that members may have on the document that's been submitted.
Okay.
Thanks very much convenor. Thanks Greg. Yeah, this is a report that we regularly submit on an annual basis, covering our work on the internal controls within the council. It normally also contains a bit more in terms of the wider dimension work we do. As I said in the letter, that was curtailed by some, by the Covid-19 pandemic, which meant that some of the work we'd intended to do at that time, we've had to fall back into the financial statements audit work, which is currently ongoing. As a result of all that, we took the view that we'd just do a truncated type of report in the form of a letter. And that's what we have for you today. Just briefly saying in terms of the conclusions, that we have looked at the system controls and found no issues that would mean that we'd need to alter our audit approach. But we did identify one or two errors where the controls could be strengthened and action has been agreed with management in relation to those. And we've also reported on the NFI, which has been subject to a paper today that's already been approved by, by the committee. So I'll draw a line there. I'd just like to offer my thanks to Greg and his team for the assistance that they gave us during the course of this audit work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilor Richardson?
Thank you convenor. I have a question with regards to paragraph nine relating to the key control findings for the general ledger. Basically, you seem to be discussing this issue about restricting access to changes to the, to the ledger code. And there's no sort of formal process in place in terms of requesting or approving these changes. You highlighted it previously and it's highlighted again. Now, in your view, are you accepting management's representations about, about this? Or do you think that is it, it is still something that you're going to continue to report because they're not putting it in place? And what are the barriers to putting it in place? I mean, surely some kind of register that notes what's actually getting asked, asked to be changed and who's made those changes is a fairly simple control to have.
Yeah, we did report this last year and again this year because it has been identified as a risk in the audit. I think this would likely be the last year that we would comment on it, even if no change was made. I think our remit is to actually identify what the risks are and this is, this is why we've included it in the report. But we are content with management's response. They feel that there is no cost benefit to putting these changes in place that would completely eliminate that risk. And perhaps Greg would maybe want to say a bit more about why they've taken that view.
Thanks Bruce. So I'll ask Sandy Flight just to comment on that, because I know it's Sandy that's been involved in the detailed discussions around the approach that's been taken. So Sandy?
Yeah, I think, to be fair, I think we've got to look at anything on a risk based approach. We do have limited resources within the team. We have identified where the key areas are. So we do take a risk based approach in terms of where our main control functions need to be. In this area, we have worked this way for some time. And as Bruce has recognised, there isn't a particular risk that's been highlighted that's arising from that. So we do believe that what we've got in place is the best use of the resources we have available in that team. And that there isn't a need for additional resources to mitigate against that risk any further.
Councilor Richardson, happy enough with that?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I just can't see why having some sort of register or formal process that actually records who's requesting changes and who's approving these changes. I can't see that there'd be a huge amount of cost involved. And if it provides additional assurance, then fair, fair dues. I mean, we've been in situations before in the council where certain people had made changes to systems and could bypass controls, particularly IT people in well-publicised cases. So having some kind of backup and register that would mitigate this, albeit small risk, would, would be, provide more assurance. So I don't know. I don't see that it would take a huge amount of resources to put something in place.
Greg? Can you back it just come in? I accept what Council Richardson's saying. However, the example she gives is on a completely different scale with regards to the external fraud. And obviously we've put in a number of measures. I think the assurance I'd like to give Council Richardson and also members of the scrutiny is that we have considered what Bruce and his team have offered and advised us. And as council officers and as your section 95 officers, I believe the controls and mitigation that are in place are sufficient at this time. However, we will keep it under review. And I think it's important to demonstrate that, you know, there are some bigger areas that we are tackling when you look at the other areas that Bruce has acknowledged in his report and the actions that's taken. So at this point, I don't feel the need to take specific action relating to that point. I provided that advice through Sandy and myself to Bruce, but we will keep that under review going forward. And if we are able to do it with the resource constraints that we're operating on, then certainly we'll do, we will do it. Or indeed if it becomes a bigger risk to the council, then we will take action.
I mean, I think what Council Richardson's looking for is someone to be put in a place that wasn't overly cumbersome or costly. And wondering if the sort of great minds that are there, whether something could be put in a place and that way it stops coming up on and on it. You know, we're not really looking at a tick box exercise, but you know, I think that Council Richardson raises a fair point. Many things that we've put in place have been about making sure there is procedures and measures so that change just kind of happen.
Yep. So again, Bailey Keenan, we're happy to keep it under review. But the advice from officers following discussions with Bruce is that at this time, we believe there are sufficient controls in place. And the degree of risk is not sufficient to alter the process. But we will keep it under review. And if we are able to do something, then we will do. But at the moment, the comment and discussions with Bruce and Sandy and the team are such that as officers, we believe there are sufficient controls in place at the moment that would avoid any fraudulent or any activities happening. But we will keep that under review. I can give you that assurance.
Okay. Is there any other questions? No, is this report agreed? Okay, I think that's us finished, isn't it? So, sorry. Yeah, that completes the business and thank you all for your time and questions that you've asked. Thanks again. Cheers.